I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Deer Valley Governing Board, special meeting of the Governing Board, public hearing to order at 7:00 PM. Let the roll call show that all are present save Ms. Simicheck who is telephonic. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Fisher, I've stayed. Thank you. Mr. McGlorino.
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch. This evening, we need to start with the public hearing on the adopted budget. And in the interest of time, I'm going to go rather quickly because nothing has changed between the proposed budget that we shared with you two weeks ago and the adopted budget that we're going to re-review this evening. This is the public hearing at a time for folks to express an opinion about our adopted budget for next fiscal year. The board will formally consider the budget during the regular meeting immediately following the hearing. So with that, remember, or as a reminder, there's been a great deal of input into the budget as there is every year through the board's input, the District Budget Committee, the Negotiated Solution Team, which are employee associations. And you can see the timeline there as to where we're at in terms of adopting the budget. This is a little bit earlier than we typically approve the budget due to the staffing changes that we're expecting for July. Here are the budget priorities from the District Budget Committee. Again, I won't reread these. We've covered these at previous meetings, including the last meeting that we held two weeks ago. Here are just some of the highlights. It is important to note that the MNO override will be reduced by thirty-three percent, thirty-three point three percent, I should say. It's over eleven million dollars. This is the first year of the phase down of the override from it not being approved by the voters in the previous election. There is a two percent inflationary increase. Should note that the legislative body has not finished for this year, and so we are making an assumption here. The competing budgets that we've seen all have the two percent inflationary increase in them, so I think it's fair to say that we are counting on that. We're still subject to current year funding, meaning that we're trying to predict what the hundred day average daily membership will be for next year, so how many, what the ADM will be as of January in 2026. We think that'll be nine hundred fewer students, just based on the progression of our senior class compared to our incoming kindergarten class. Teacher Experience Index did go up very slightly, and then we are projecting just over eleven million dollars worth of carry forward from this year. So savings from this year that we're carrying forward into next year due to the MNO reduction, MNO override reduction. Staffing, again, we didn't change any of the staffing standards. We are moving twenty-five percent of the district additional assistance, part of the formula into MNO, or remaining, the remaining seventy-five percent will remain in capital. And we are using an increased amount of, bless you, of cash, of our five cash accounts for next year, partly due to some of the increased fees that the board had previously approved. And so the net result is our general budget limit's going from two hundred and eighty-three million down to two hundred and sixty-seven million, comparing this year, the current year fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six. We've previously shared that we had about a seventeen million dollar deficit. It was over twenty million dollars if you count the inflationary increases, but since we used reserves as part of the benefit recommendation the board approved, we ended up using part of the reserves that are held at Valley Schools, and those are held in trust, so those aren't necessarily our funds from a standpoint of balancing this year's budget. But it does give us the ability to use those funds for an expense that would otherwise been charged for next year. So we took that out of this comparison of kind of sources and uses. So the revenue changes, you can see just over seventeen million dollars between the override loss and the loss of students. And then you can see the various things that have been implemented by the board that make up that seventeen million dollars, or virtually make up the entire seventeen million dollars. What that looks like in terms of the budget book that, or the sometimes referred to as the goal book, this is what our budget looks like, the working budget. So we're within thirty-four thousand dollars of balancing that budget, again, using an increased amount of cash accounts, an estimated budget balance carry forward of eleven million dollars, and counting on the two percent inflationary increase that has not been resolved by the state legislature. Net result of staffing changes, sixty-four, reduction of certified staff in term of full-time equivalency, or FTE, again, largely due to the decrease in students, and likewise, almost fifteen fewer FTE on the classified staff. Those are net numbers, does not include the, they do include the increase to some specialized programs for our special education population that will be part of what we will implement for next year. And it does include the one furlough day, as you saw on the list of sources and uses, for all employees except our nine-month classified staff. On the non-staffing side, slight decrease in the state retirement contribution, which is a savings not only to the district but also to our employees and their net check. The alternative contribution rate was a slight decrease, which helps the employer, does not have an effect on our rehired, retired, rehired employees. We are using, again, the Valley Schools Employee Benefit Group reserves to help balance the cost of the increase in our insurance program costs. We are programming no changes to utilities, and that's due to the utility management program. There are rate increases that will cause some increases in cost in utilities. We are counting on the utility management program to continue to offset those increased rate costs from APS. There were no changes to the district department discretionary budget, but a small decrease on the school side for their discretionary budgets, again, because the schools' budgets are based on a formula that's tied to students, so the student count, you see, thirty-eight thousand dollars, you know, divided over forty-two schools, a very small dollar amount per school. We did not make an increase to our property liability insurance, but just as, to be on the record, there will likely need to be an increase in property liability, that line item in future years, just because of the cost of reinsurance continues to go up, not so much due to our experience, but just experiences that are happening throughout the nation that are affecting the insurance market as a whole. And then the capital budget is being established at the thirteen point six, which is the seventy-five percent of the district additional assistance formula. When it comes to taxes, we covered this last time, so I'll just be brief in terms of what the tax decreases are expected for the tax, not only tax rate decrease, but what the decrease in what projected tax will be paid by the taxpayers. So primary tax decreasing about seven cents, and it's an equalized formula, so that's why you don't see as much of a change there, as well as the secondary tax rate decreasing about forty-seven cents. And that's in part because the voter-approved initiatives, such as the MNO override, are funded fully from the secondary tax rate. So we had a decrease in our debt service payment, as well as one-third reduction to the MNO override, which causing a net result of almost a fifty cent reduction in the tax rate. So the net impact on the average assessed valuation home is a hundred and two dollar annual decrease, almost ten percent decrease from what they were paying. This is what that looks like, so you can see the amount going from a thousand and fifty-three dollars on that average assessed valuation home down to nine hundred and fifty dollars is what we're projecting. And these are actual parcels within our district because very few parcels are the actual average, and you can see the amount will vary based on the assessed valuation and what the assessed valuation changes over time. So as I remind people, often it's to look at just the tax rate declining, I don't think is the full story, because you also have to look at the assessed valuation because you're multiplying the tax rate by the assessed valuation. So just saying the tax rate decreases when the assessed valuation is increasing doesn't give a true picture of what the actual tax is being paid. And then here's just two additional parcels, and I just picked parcels that are in various locations of the district that have varying dollar amounts. And since we don't have, I don't think I mentioned this during the proposed budget, but since we're not levying for any adjacent ways, or having any increase that is outside of what the formula provides, there was no need for a truth and taxation notice, and therefore, that was not provided, you know, to the public, again, because it was not required. Again, our tax rate and the corresponding taxes that we expect our homeowners to pay will be decreasing for next year. That's all the information I have regarding the proposed budget. The rest of the state forms are also included. They are draft forms, so the utter general has not been able to finalize those forms since the legislature has not completed their work for the year. And as a result, it is likely that the board will have to revise the budget sometime early in next fiscal year to be able to get them on the correct form, likely to be as early as September. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is the time that the board does need to call for the public to also provide any of their comments since it is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. McGlorino. Are there any comments from the public regarding this topic? Any discussion from the board?
I have one question. I was not here for the last board meeting, but I did review all the documents and did watch the meeting live. I was recovering from surgery, and I asked a question, I think you answered it, but I apologize, I don't remember the answer, so I'll ask the question again. What does the homeowner's rebate mean or refer to?
President Carver, Dr. Pack, the homeowner's rebate is a means to be able to provide a additional discount for homeowners for their primary residence, up to six hundred dollars, so it's capped at a certain dollar amount. And it provides, and it shows up as, on the tax bill, as additional state aid, so it's a reduction to the taxes that are paid. So instead of the property homeowner paying that, it actually reduces their tax burden, it comes, that money comes from the general fund, from the state general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from Mr. McGlorino? Seeing none, we thank you, sir, for your time. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. As soon as I get the thumbs up, we'll go into our regular meeting. Ready? Okay. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the regularly scheduled Deer Valley Governing Board to order at 7:15. Let the roll call show all members are present, save Ms. Simicheck who is telephonic. Mr. Galetti, could you grace us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please, followed by a moment?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Pack?
Second.
I move that the board requests that the administration review the district's public records request processing. Oh, I'm sorry, a little rusty. That the governing board adopt the agenda with exception of moving action item four D directly following adoption of agenda and move consent agenda items three G, three H, and three I for separate consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. That being the case, the next item on the agenda would be item four D, as in Delta. Dr. Pack?
Delta.
Right here. Okay. I move that the board requests that the administration review the district's public records request processing protocols to determine if any changes to the current... Four D. I, okay.
So we have a motion, the original motion, so we're amending the motion on this, KEB twenty twenty-five.
So I'm just reading this. I'm not reading these words.
You're amending the motion.
Okay, I move to amend the motion. I move to amend the motion, KEB complaint, twenty twenty-five dash zero five zero eight I move that the board requests that the administration review the district's public records request processing protocols to determine if any changes to the current protocols are warranted to help ensure legal compliance and promote efficiencies.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Ms. Fisher?
The motion should be used to amend the motion.
What they're saying is that you needed to read the motion first.
So we would be voting on an amendment, but there's not an original motion.
And we would amend the motion.
This is...
That is number one.
I read that.
Yes.
Please.
Denise will get it straightened out. We've got to do this right.
It's number one, and I read number one.
Okay.
Solves that, okay.
Agreed.
Stand by.
Yes, but it's not an amendment, it's just a motion, right? That's just a motion, we're not amending it.
Okay.
Okay, we think we got it right. I move that the governing board requests the administration review the district's public records request processing protocols to determine if any changes to the current protocols are warranted to help ensure legal compliance and promote efficiencies in response to KEB complaint twenty twenty-five zero five zero eight dash one.
Second.
All those in favor? No, hold on a second. Sheila's typing as fast as she can.
It's not up yet, just got to finish that.
Ms. Radfield, second. As soon as it comes up. Anybody have it yet? Typo if and charges, should be if any charges. Second line, one, two, three, four.
If any changes, instead of and changes. Add a Y.
And this is for zero five zero eight. The KEB number is zero five zero eight.
Not coming up.
Heard it.
Wait, wait a minute. I just have time, this is... Thank you.
It's scrolling, scrolling. It's pretty much, it's... Sheila, I got another one to vote, is that the same one? I know, but this is the eight one. This is the one I'm seeing. No, just the one. So what was the one I just voted on?
And I apologize.
Yes, Mrs. Taylor, that looks correct. Ms. Simicheck, are you up to speed on the current motion?
I believe so.
Okay, if you need me to restate it, I can.
Can you restate it, please? Thank you.
I think you're going to have to close your whole browser.
Why do you want me to?
You're going to have to just completely close it.
I'm going to reread the motion for everybody remotely and attending at home. That the board requests that the administration review the district's public records request processing protocols to determine if any changes to the current protocols are warranted to help ensure legal compliance and promote efficiencies regarding KEB twenty twenty-five dash oh five oh eight dash one, and that the board take no further action. Okay, now we're just trying to vote?
Yep.
Okay. Who are we still waiting on? Should it be popping up again? Should it be popping up again? Because most of us already have voted, the ones of us that can. Okay, stand by. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. Ms. Fisher?
This is...
This is on the first one that we just discussed about public records request. Aye, Mr. Radfield?
Aye.
Aye, and?
Abstain.
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 Thank you. Microphones are working really good tonight. Ms. Simicheck? Thank you, Ms. Taylor, it is correct.
It's not, is it?
Mr. Radfield, computer's down?
Man down, man down.
Yes. Mr. Radfield, we'll just record your vote manually tonight, so just speak your vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yep, we're good.
Just look at it, look at it.
Yeah, you can dial in without having to vote. Part two of item four Delta. I move that the board take no further action on KEB twenty twenty-five dash zero four one five. Is there a second?
Okay.
I think we have too many words in here. That the board requests that the governing board. Shouldn't it just be that the governing board? No? It's okay? Okay, alright then. Mr. Botfield? Aye? Okay, should have it. Ms. Simicheck, did you vote?
I voted.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and thank you everybody for bearing with us on that. Always gets difficult when we go on the fly. Hey, next item for business, item two A? Dr. Pack.
I move that the governing board approve the Deer Valley Education Foundation DVEF memorandum of understanding MOU for two thousand twenty five twenty six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
I think there's a repeated bullet point. Does it make a difference?
In, in the MOU, is reported item, a repeated item?
Number five and the second to the last are the same thing. Except for ones in parentheses.
You okay with that? Mr. Botfield, it'll be okay. Okay.
No, I'm asking if it's matters that-
We're, we're in discussion, we've got a first and a second, she's pointing out that- You said which ones now?
Second to the last one, may provide students' family aid to DVSD students' family, food, temporary housing, other basic needs, i.e. clothing, shoes, uniforms, et cetera. Above, it says, may provide student, uh, may provide student family aid DVSD students and families financially, aid, food, temporary housing, other basic needs, i.e. clothes, shoes, it's the same thing twice.
I don't see that on my copy. Hold on a second. I, I've got solicit monies and opportunities, and then it goes may provide student and family aid, and then it says may support DVSD career paths.
On which one, that's not what mine says.
Benefits to Deer Valley Unified School District, is that the page you're on?
Page two.
Yes, page two. Exhibit A. Yeah, as long as they don't contradict each other, you're okay. We can correct it. We're not changing the intent.
President Carver, members of the board, I might be able to speak to this. The, uh, uh, the list that you have before you is an evolution, so it has been added on to over time. Uh, the fifth bullet obviously was there before, they've kind of been added chronologically, that's the way that they show. Um, that fifth bullet was for, specifically for opportunity grants, as it says, provide student opportunity grants, uh, including financial aid and, and, uh, oh, uh, family aid, I'm sorry. The family aid to students' families. The, the second to last bullet was added when we specifically had some of the giving closets and the, specifically the donation bins. And it, it previously, or last year, uh, even cited that the, uh, um, Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, which is, is a, a program that we continue to participate in, was named specifically, on that second to last one, uh, because we have been, we have extended, expanded that program, we took the name out. So, the second to last one had more information in it, specific to the donation bins and uh, some of the programs specifically for that, we removed that, so that's why it probably looks like it's, um, duplicated.
Doesn't cause a problem.
Sorry, I could not hear you.
Won't cause a problem.
Uh, it will, no, it will not cause a problem in the, in the agreement, but it is one of the changes, if you were to look at last year's MOU, uh, specifically named, um, the donation bins, um, and since we didn't want the, uh, the foundation to be handcuffed by one program over another, uh, we just took the name out, so that's why it's, you know, it looks like it's being duplicated.
Any further discussion from Mr. McGlorino? On this item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I did. Technology is a wonderful thing tonight. Okay, item two B is in Bravo, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the use of FY twenty six insurance proceeds.
Any discussion? From Mr. McGlorino?
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, there's been no changes to the insurance proceed from when we reviewed it at the last meeting.
Thank you, sir. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item two C, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to adopt the two thousand twenty five six, two thousand twenty five twenty six expenditure budget.
Second.
Anything to add, Mr. McGlorino?
Uh, President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, nothing more to add than what we've, uh, shared in the, in the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
I have a few.
Ms. Fisher?
Um, I remain concerned that we, um, I've seen the way this process works when we're really needing to cut, and when we are prioritizing students above all else, um, and I am not seeing that whatsoever. The cuts I've seen that are at the district office have all been on special education. Um, the cuts I've seen, um, as far as programs are things that would help our kids to get caught up, things that would benefit our children, and I've seen no real consideration of areas that would not have direct impact to children. And so I'm highly concerned that, um, this budget does not hold any reality to the situation that Deer Valley is currently in. Um, and I'm also concerned with the comments that I've received, both from the public and from, um, employees within the district who have expressed, um, concerns for their programs, or for what's being cut, or for their children in their classrooms. And I just would hope that at some point we start taking, um, a closer look and not just glossing over and rubber stamping anything that's presented, um, cause there's not enough de, there's not enough data or detail that's been provided.
Anyone else? Dr. Finch? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item four, I'm sorry, two D, Delta, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to consider, discuss, amend if desired, and if deemed advisable, to adopt a resolution approving the governing board's argument in support of the special maintenance and operation budget election.
Mr. McGlorino, anything to add? I'm sorry, will you use a second? Thank you, Mr. Botfield. Mr. McGlorino?
President Carver, members of the board, and Dr. Finch, um, as you might suspect, our attorney helped us with the language for the agenda item, um, as lengthy as it, as it became. But, uh, we shared a draft pro statement, um, with the board at the previous meeting, and, um, we did not make any changes to that based on the comments and feedback that we received as a result of that. Essentially, it's very similar, if not, uh, close to identical to the pro statement that was in the, um, the publicity pamphlet for the twenty twenty four election with the, uh, one difference of, uh, we changed the word continue to restore. Uh, so we were asking the voters to continue something a year ago, we're now asking them to restore it to the full, uh, as the board has voted for that, so, uh, but this is still an opportunity for us to make any edits to this, um, once the board makes the decision this evening, uh, we will then, uh, uh, include it in the pamphlet. Uh, we do have more time if the board does, and I know, um, some members were not able to be at the last meeting, um, this is not, uh, due until August seventh, uh, so there is a schedule, another scheduled board meeting, uh, between now and, and the seventh, if the board is not ready to make a determination on the pro statement, see, just for your information.
Any input or discussion from Mr. McGlorino on this topic?
I'd like to add that since I was not present, I did review, um, the documents and did send questions which were at an answer to my satisfaction, so thank you.
Anything further from Mr. McGlorino?
Um, I just wanna make it clear, um, this is a statute, statutorily required statement. It's not something that is, is that we have an option to do. Correct.
Uh, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, that is correct, uh, statutorily, the board is required to, um, to submit a, what's referred to, commonly referred to as a pro statement, uh, once they call for an M and O override election. I did fail to mention, um, at the suggestion of our attorney, the one change between the proposed, or when we previewed this and, uh, this evening, is they did ask us to put, uh, the word yes in quotes, uh, so it did not appear in quotes when we first shared it with you, um, I, I don't know the significance of that, uh, and it, um, obviously did not change the word count, which is also, uh, that has to be within two hundred words, but yes, to answer your question directly, it is a statutory requirement for the board to adopt a pro statement, uh, for the publicity pamphlet.
Thank you, Mr. McGlorino. Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item three, Dr. Pack?
Three A.
I move that the governing board adopt the agenda with exception of moving action item. Thank you. I move that the governing board approve consent agenda items three A through three Q, with the exception of moving consent agenda items three G, H, and I for separate consideration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, I believe next up would be three G.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the proposal from Akin's distribution for purchase of dairy supply and delivery, RFP number twenty six dash two nine zero two dash zero zero three dash five, FY two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six, with the option to renew annually up to four additional one-year terms with a final expiration June thirtieth, two thousand thirty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this topic? Dr. Pack, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, we had a second, Mr. Botfield.
So I just have a question, um, and it's in relation to this agenda item as well as H and I, more of an overview question, partly because I'm a newbie, but also members of the community have asked me questions about these types of things. So my question is, why is one of the bid, one of the bids between G, H, and I, and I know we're only on G right now, why is one bid granted on highest evaluation score of the bidders, and another bid scored on the lowest bidder of each line, and yet another one granted based on the vendor being considered advantageous for the district?
Do you have that, Mr. McGlorino?
I'm sorry, is that question for me?
I believe so.
Yeah, so I, so I have a question on a consent agenda item G, but the question is a broad question for G, H, and I. My question is-
I, I heard the question. President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, um, there, there is a distinct difference in, um, in, in the three items that are, that you see here. Uh, the first item, item G that we're speaking about now is a request for proposal, um, the other two are invitation forbid, so one's an RFP, the other two are IFBs. Uh, and a request for proposal, uh, those items, um, additional information, uh, outside of cost can be, uh, part of the consideration, so there's a scoring matrix, uh, that we use for, um, I, for evaluating those. So that's why, um, the highest ranked item was provided, uh, in the request for proposal, so it's not solely based on price, uh, on request for proposal. Uh, the IFB or invitation forbid, um, there is the, uh, the, uh, we, we have the obligation to be able to consider the lowest, um, responsible bid, I, and in the case of, of one of the future items that you're going to, we're gonna have a chance to talk about, um, there were only three respondents, um, one of which was a no bid, uh, so then we also will, uh, indicate that we'll take the most advantageous one to make sure that, um, in the event that we only had a single bid, uh, that was received, we have to verify that that's a competitive price, or that it's advantageous to the district. Um, and with only two responses, known responses, uh, that's why it was noted in the, uh, in the paperwork, uh, and I, I wanna apologize publicly, uh, for not responding to your answers, um, I unfortunately was not, um, in the state of Arizona until last night, so I apologize.
Thank you for that, um, just a follow-up. What determines if a bid is an RFP, a request, or an IFB, an invitation?
Uh, President Carver, Dr. Pack, um, it can be, there, there are things that can only be done by invitation forbid, um, it's, uh, to answer your question directly, the procurement code dictates, um, and there are times when we might want to utilize a request for proposal, when we want something other than just price to be a determinant, um, is kind of the, you know, rule of thumb, I'll say, but there are certain, uh, things that can only be secured through an invitation forbid, which would be then solely based on price.
Okay, then one last question, um, in the situations where you only get two bids, or one's a no bid, are bids ever sought outside of posting on the Arizona purchasing.org website?
Uh, President Carver, uh, Dr. Pack, uh, I would say there would be, uh, written quotes that we would, uh, secure outside of AZ purchasing up to the hundred thousand dollar, uh, bid threshold, uh, but then, uh, for consistency- But then for consistency, we do use AZ Purchasing exclusively for our solicitation of bids. They also, anybody that inquires about being added to our bid list, we do direct them to AZ Purchasing, they register with AZ Purchasing, and then they automatically will receive any solicitation for any commodity that they sign up for. So for consistency purposes, we exclusively issue the solicitations through AZ Purchasing for anything over $100,000.
Thank you.
Any further questions from Mr. McGlorino? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Next item. Dr. Pack, three H. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to award contracts to the nine vendors listed on the solicitation results for General Food and Supply Distributor IFB 26 2905 0045, FY 2025-2026, effective date July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, with the option to renew annually up to four additional one-year terms with a final expiration date of June 30th, 2030.
Second.
Any discussion?
Not now that my question's been answered. Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item three, aye, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to award contracts. Nope, that's the wrong screen. I'll look at the screen. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to order contract to Equity Sign Group IFB 26 5100 0075, Marquise Optech Services Repairs, Replacements, and Parts, effective date of August 25th, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, with the option to renew annually for up to four additional one-year terms.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
My question was answered.
Anything further? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item four A, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board approve all employee professional development out of state per governing board policy, GCC-E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying. Aye.
Aye. Oh, it's back. Peter's everywhere.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item four B is in Bravo. Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to pre-approve the addenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Because of the student activities, I'm a little...
Next on the agenda, item four C, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the terms and conditions of the awarded School Facilities Division Building Renewal Grant Funding for the Diamond Canyon Chiller Replacement Project, and authorize the governing board president to sign the School Facilities Terms and Conditions document.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. McGlorino?
Just briefly, President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, we originally submitted this project. We do have, there are redundant chillers at our schools. So at Diamond Canyon, there are two chillers. One of the chillers is not functioning properly, which leaves us in a precarious situation. We submitted the project to the School Facilities Division, and they did something that was curious to us. They rejected the project and submitted it back to us, letting us know that they thought that this project should go through a new process that they have that they call Construction Lite, L-I-T-E. And to help expedite the process because of the, I assume because of the precarious situation, that the chilled water plant there actually provides all the cooling for the school. So in order for us to pursue that Construction Lite process, they do require us to have the board approve and the board president to sign their standard terms and conditions, which we have brought forward before on School Facilities Division projects. So same terms and conditions that the board has approved before. I just wanted to provide the note of how we got to this point, and hopefully, in an expedited process, we might be able to see something sooner as opposed to later. Again, pending funding and other things that would be dependent on this. But, and I'd be happy to answer the question aboard my desk.
Any questions for Mr. McGlorino regarding the chiller project? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Next up on the agenda, item five A. Ms. McCusker, do you have something for us?
Good evening, President Carver, governing board, Dr. Finch, committee. I am here this evening to talk about a revised board policy. And if you go to the next slide, or I will go to the next slide. This policy review is being considered because there was an update within the 56th legislature, and we are adhering and aligning as a district to the language in this statute. And we are going to change some of the language that you will see in the next slide. This policy, JHD, has to do with exclusions and exemptions. School nurses sit under Student Support Services in Deer Valley Unified School Districts, so we support this policy as well as our school nurses. Exclusions and exemptions support students who have a chronic health condition, and due to that chronic health condition, they may miss school. And as a result, we don't want that to be a deficit to a student. We want to assure that they are still able to acquire not only instruction, but also not be at a deficit. In other words, not lose credit. So as we look at this policy, some of the updates include removing the word homework and actually adding the word assignments. In order to have homework, a student actually must be in class, receiving the instruction directly from the student. So the students working alongside our homebound instructors and/or instructors that are assigned from the campus actually receive assignments. So we need to assure that the students have access to that and not homework. And then the other language that has been changed includes adding additional medical practitioners that may provide documentation or medical documentation for exclusions and exemptions to our school nurses. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Anything from the board regarding the proposed changes to the policy? Thank you, Dr. McCusker. We appreciate you. Any public comment tonight? No public comment. Governing Board reports. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to kick us off? Don't you do that, sir? Ms. Semicek is dropped from the meeting, just so everybody can be aware. At 8:00 PM. Okay. Mrs. Fisher, sorry to interrupt.
Hi. Well, it's been an interesting while. I really enjoyed going to the summer leadership with Dr. Pack. It was really eye-opening seeing, you know, the boards that unite, the boards that work diligently within what they should be doing as their assignments. I'm somewhat just disappointed in how deeply our board has degraded into not doing really any of the stuff that's in statute or is required of the board to do. The only reason I'm saying that is because I've recently heard from multiple employees who have left the district, problems they're facing, why they left, and what they faced when they were here. It's wonderful when you can market that things are great, and that we win awards for things being great. But when we have employees leaving in droves, and we have employees that are, call you in tears, and they don't know what's going to happen next to them, it's heartbreaking. That's the best I can say. I would like to compel this board to start taking some of these things that we see on the back end serious. I know I faced an extreme challenge, which everybody knows because it's, half of it's shared out by an individual or a few individuals. What they don't know is everything that was on that was completely refuted. But when it occurred to me, I said, if I am ever in a position to prevent someone from doing such a horrendous and cruel hateful acts to other people, I will do what I can to stop them. And I sit up here, one of five, and I have zero power to stop cruel acts to individuals. And so I just want to compel this board. We're starting a new school year. We got a whole, what, you know, half of our principals are all brand new. We've got a whole batch of new employees. I'm asking that this board does whatever they have to, to protect our employees. It's great that you may make a personal connection to someone, an individual or individuals. But our job isn't to be the buddy of one, it's to be the protector of all. I wish y'all had been at lunch with me yesterday and overheard the conversation. My husband just sat there, and he just shook his head, and he says, honey, I don't think you can fix it. And I said, I can, but my God, can. So I'm going to pray for Deer Valley, whether y'all like it or not, our employees deserve better. No one should have the conversation that they shared with me. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Butfield?
First, thank you, Jim, for everything you've done. It is appreciated, and I think somebody should say thank you. Second, I went to graduations in Boston and LA, and ours are better. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Butfield. Dr. Pack?
So I went to the leadership conference in the Flagstaff. It was wonderful to meet with other school board members across the state, talking with people with common ground. I went to all the trainings. I was glad that Ms. Fisher was there because we were in some trainings together. We also, I also like to divide and conquer. So sometimes I would see her going in one, and I go in another, because if there's something interesting, she can share with me. So I don't remember, Ms. Fisher, if you were in this one where we got the bookmarks? Good. So I'm going to give one to Mr. Butfield, and I'm going to give one to Mr. Carver, because as teachers go to training, you come back and share what you learned. And so these were items that other school boards were sitting at a table and conversating together with, and another school board invited me in their conversation, which was nice. But in the best of all worlds, I would love to have our whole board there, conversating about these topics and learning and growing, and even with our differences and differences of opinion and agree to disagrees, if we could sit at the table and talk about it. Students, educators, community, board, money, and programs, all components of being a school board member. So I did learn a lot. I just missed having our whole board there together to learn and grow together. But you still learn from other people when you talk to other people, and it was a very good experience. I appreciate the opportunity to go to that event, and I would highly recommend it next year. And there was even a little pine cone walk, and so I got to get a little walk-in before my surgery. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pack. Appreciate you. So since we met last time, I was able to participate in the ASBA Legislative Committee, second year doing this, in which we discuss the different things that were brought forward from the different school districts across the state to help form their legislative platform that they send up to the Capitol. A couple of things that I wanted to, so just so everybody knows, we went through all 16 pages, item by item, everything that's on that two-page piece of paper that we look at, we discuss, we decide if the wording sounds right, if it's the best way to give it to a lawyer or lobbyist, whichever word you prefer to use, to take to the Capitol, to try to get certain things done. So there's a lot of edits, there's some removals, some deletions, as a matter of fact, on here of other things. And then we did discuss some of the new items that were brought forward by school districts. But I just wanted to, some of the things that we discussed, like number seven in section two, was amend the current statute to allow school board members to use the equal system. That's, as of this meeting, and not this meeting, but the meeting that I attended, that was currently at the legislature under SB 1041. So that was, that was one of two examples that we have in this sheet of the platform doing its job. A lot of people kind of poo-poo, you know, whether or not we should spend our time, invest our energies in participating in ASBA and participating in the Legislative Committee. And I always tell people, if you leave the room, then you don't have a voice, right? So I'm glad to participate in this and take Deer Valley's concerns to the committee. The other thing that I wanted to bring forward, actually came from Deer Valley last year during our last conversation that we had about the platform and what we wanted to send, and we sent, "Develop a more comprehensive harassment, bullying definition and system to better enhance the clarity of understanding and the protection of our youth," citing ARS 341 A36. And this year, there were more districts that had chimed in that wanted to make sure that this stayed on the platform. But the positive note, well, it's kind of a mixed bag really, is that it was actually introduced into the legislature through the Senate in SB 1508. Unfortunately, the House killed it and did not move forward, so I don't exactly know what the ick is behind that, that people wouldn't want to give us a better definition so that we could better protect our children. But I wanted to bring these two items to light, that it shows that the system works the way that it's supposed to from our point. Probably where we dropped the ball with our item that we brought, discussing harassment and bullying, is that communication wasn't effective in letting the community know that this was going forward so that we could contact our representatives and make sure that we wanted something. Whether it was what was presented, or whether it was something like it, we wanted something. And we ended up this year with nothing. So hopefully, it stayed on the platform. It'll be brought up again next year. It's still in bill form, it just needs to be revived next time around. Unfortunately, the other things that Deer Valley brought this year, they couldn't find value in, which was kind of dis- they couldn't find value in, which was kind of disappointing because one of the things that we talked about was that the school board members should be subjected to a background check, no different than our teachers and administration that works with the children. And it was kind of disappointing to see politics in action. Our elected officials far that the food chain don't do it, so why should we have to? I'm sorry, I thought this particular level was about the kids, right? So I would, I'm making a request of this board that we do let the administration know that we would like, and I don't have the policy in front of me, but we need to find out which policy it would be. If we can tag on to an existing one or craft a new one to where at least Deer Valley can set some guardrails of expectation of what we want from our school board members. And if that includes the background check or whatever. But at a minimum, at least what it is that our employees go through, I think that's of expectation of what we want for the people that come work here. They'll have a better sense of what's expected, and they'll see that we're leading by example instead of having the rules not from any concept. And that's it in a nutshell. Dr. Finch?
Thank you, President Carver. Our captain's been working on retention numbers, and we had about the same retention now, numbers for the last 15 years have been about the same. But we did have a jump this year with new to Deer Valley, which is unusual. So we're checking out why that is the case. We think it might be because of our teacher prep program, where we have about 120 adults that are in our own design program that has approval from the state. And many of the districts around are beginning to copy our model. And so we found that these teachers really succeed with our mentoring program. And a lot of our, we call them swimming buddies to help them be successful. So we think that might be why we are jumping up significantly with retention in that area. If you follow me on social media or the district, section seven, which is a national basketball showcase, comes here. It was in Mesa this year. Four of our five boys teams and I think three of our five girls teams were involved and did really well. It's people from all over the country, coaches from all over the country come to see that. And so they had good success with that. Summer camps are going on, if you haven't wanted to go check one out, Community Ed's rolling. I was at Legend Springs today, 330 kids there. I was at Notary Canyon, 180 kids there. So we have multiple camps going, actually, those are two that I visited today. Constitution and Sunrise also have the early childhood, want to see those and see the little people. We go all the way down to, I believe, eight months. We have eight weeks, according to Dr. McCusker. So you have to have some shots or something. You know, not everybody gets to hold them. Yeah, you got to go check with Dr. McCusker, see what you need. We're obviously hiring and planning for 2026. We have a, this year, we have a banner year of employees from other districts, and especially in administration, record number, I would say, probably since I've been here. And it's probably a piece of it is, we, as you know, Forbes recognized us as the best mid-sized employer in the state of Arizona five years in a row. That means we have a correct culture where we celebrate each other and celebrate all the work that we do together as a team. So it's, we'll see how they last in our machine because we have high standards as well. So hopefully, the employees will learn the Deer Valley way and help us continue to achieve our excellence. We are still working with our legislators downtown. I think that's why Ms. Simicheck wasn't present today. She's probably sleeping on the floor, maybe I think it worked through the night. But I've been working with ASA and the FRG, one of their legislative committees. And we're trying to get, obviously, public schools more resources than they currently achieve. We are 49th in the nation for support from the legislature. And we'd love to move up our ranking to like 48th, that'd be amazing. And I don't see that, we'll probably go down to 50th. I also want to recognize Mr. Lyles in the back 40 there, hiding behind the curtain. This is the last meeting, he's our techie, he's, there he is right there. Congratulations, he's heading out. He's going to be working for the Arizona State Supreme Court as their techie. It's pretty exciting. His wife is, his wife is sticking around and she teaches over there at Spire. And so we got the better end of the deal, it sounds like, so that's good. We told him he can come back if he does not have any fun, so we'll leave the light on for you. And as Mr. McGlorino is heading out, we want to thank him for his service as well. We have Heather Mock sitting here, she will be taking his spot. And she is actually a former employee, worked for Jim and wants to come back to Deer Valley. And Megan Quell also is another former Deer Valley employee that's going to be coming. And both of them work for Jim, and so we're looking forward to get those kids back. And the next meeting is July 15th in three weeks, so we'll see you then. Thanks, Jim.
We supposed to sing na 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 na, hey hey, goodbye? Future meeting dates are listed on the district website. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight? In a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, meeting adjourned.